Okay. Welcome to the Bellingham Zoning Board Appeals Meeting for August 20. This is a continuation for a public hearing for a comprehensive permit request for 161 mechanics. Jim, do you want to give us kind of the update?
Yeah, sure. So at the last meeting, we gave the applicant a number of items to, to take a look at, update on the plan sets and, you know, sharpen your pencil on a few things. So in front of you tonight is our revised plan set that you have. In addition, you have the BSD group, which is, you know, the town's peer review engineers, review of stormwater as well as the notice of intent for conservation, which they are before conservation right now and they're pretty, or they've had their, their first meeting and a site walk there. And I believe they're meeting early in September. And then in addition to the peer review, you have the peer review responses from Bowler Engineering. BSD group isn't going to be able to join us tonight. He is sick, but I spoke with him before the meeting. By, by and large, everything that was discussed at the peer review, Bowler has addressed in this, in this response. And I'm sure any things that you've had questions on, Jesse Johnson from Bowler Engineering here, that certainly address those concerns or questions. So that's where we are. Some administrative items. So we have Ray logging in from home. We have Brian, who, Brian Wright, who was absent at the last meeting, but has been read in all the minutes, watched the video. So he's good to go. And Art, I believe, I don't want to speak for you, but I believe you're accusing yourself. Is that correct?
That is correct, Jim.
Thank you. All right. I have, want to hand it off to the applicant to give us an update?
Sure. Yep. Why don't you walk us through the latest developments?
Sure. I'm going to share, I mean, you have one second.
Also, I guess before the shared screen, was there anything, did anything come out during the Conservation Commission kind of walk through or?
I'll give you an update on that.
Yeah.
I still unmute him or do I need to unmute myself?
Nope. You are, you don't have to unmute. That, that handy little 1970s microphone is picks up the whole.
I get what.
Mr. Chairman, just informational purposes, Peter Freeman, attorney for the applicant. So, and I apologize if I don't remember correctly, but with one member recusing, whoops, one member recusing himself, can you still hear me?
Yep, yep. Yeah, Justin's just playing with the.
I get it. Yep. So, and this is where I apologize. I can't remember if it's what the number of members normally is, but how many would we have as voting members as a result of the recusal?
Yep. Yeah. Four voting members. And obviously with a conference permit, you need a majority vote. It's a five member vote.
Right, right. That's what I thought. So I don't know if, Russell, you here? Russell Deon?
I am, Peter.
Yeah. So if you understand that, then, you know, go forward. It's fine. I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Just for refresher, Jesse Johnson, Bowler Engineering, here tonight representing the applicant as a civil engineering consultant for the project. Giving you an update, I was just asked about how the conservation sidewalk went. I thought it went very well. We walked the site, walked the disturbed areas within the buffer zones in their jurisdiction, walked the wetland delineation. I showed them some of the improvements we had made with the recent changes since the last plan that was originally submitted as part of the notice of intent. We had done one hearing prior to the site walk. I got some feedback from the hearing. We modified the plans we have for you to address some of their concerns. One of the biggest things that we did is we're proposing to, to a conservation seed mix within the 100 foot buffer zone so that we're going to restore a lot of that area that is upgrading of the 25 foot existing vegetated area. We have a tree line that falls nicely along the 25 foot no disturb that is the regulated area in town that you can't cut into vegetation. That's what's existing there now. But uphill of that, within the 100 foot buffer, you have a lot of exposed gravel, just scrub and brush. We've proposed to put a conservation seed mix in there so that you don't have to worry about manicured lawn areas are going to be taken care of with herbicides and pesticides. It'll be behind the garage area. So essentially if you're looking on the screen, it's behind the covered garages. And we show it as a lighter green, if you will, on this rendering. And then the darker green is the outline of the existing vegetated area. So that was a significant improvement on the design. And we told them that they seemed to be happy with that. And we got positive feedback at the end. It was thought that we'd probably get a favorable vote at their next hearing early in September. Okay. We did make some improvements to the design since the last time we talked to you. There was a number of meetings with the butters in the back. They announced they have some improvements on screening and buffering back there. You can see from this rendering that a couple of things that we did was we shifted, we can start over here by building four. We shifted the covered parking area to essentially be our effective screening between that building and the residential building behind it. So now we have structure between the two. And we've also proposed to add in about eight trees on top of the existing vegetation that will remain. And those trees, we have a note on the plan that will be forked with the butters to have them placed where it's most beneficial. So it's going to be a little bit fluid and having some meetings while they're going through construction to make sure those are put in the right spots.
Is that, the covered parking, is it just going to be open with a roof?
Yeah, Adirondack, I guess you call it. Where you have three side parking with a roof, so.
Oh, it'll be an override door.
No, no, clarification. Parking will have garage doors.
Oh, my.
And be secured.
Oh, it's all will be.
It's all secure.
Yeah, I just wondered because I know with, I mean, the, the other area where the garages were moved apart as the vegetative bu- buffer. And then this where the, the neighbors kind of opted for having the structures as a barrier. I'm just curious about if they're aware of, if it was just open, then you're going to see.
No, when I met with him, I explained to them that closed, enclosed garages. I know the terms in this meeting is going both ways, but it is our intent to have enclosed lockable garage. Okay, absolutely.
Just out of curiosity, how much room behind the garages? My concern would be people's stories.
Only, we're showing about three to four feet behind the garages of cleared area. And that's all that's seen of the grading.
Catch all. But no, the residents won't be allowed to go behind the garages. So if you look on Jesse's plan, Jesse, scroll with your, with your pump. There's that six foot stockade fence that goes from corner garage to corner garage.
Gotcha.
Okay. So I mean, our property managers will monitor the backs of the garages, but this, the idea is not to allow any residents to even have access to the back.
Great.
And then you brought up a good point, the difference in the approach for the screening. So the other one over by building one, where we separated the garages. And the reason being is that there's an existing natural grade that grows, that goes up between where we're proposing to have the turn in our access and out of butter. And the reason we wanted to do that and get the garages away from that area is because we can leave that natural ground in state as much as we can and the vegetation on top of it. And that's a significant grade going up. It's about 13 feet difference between the finished floor of the building in that area and the top of the knoll that's between the building and the butter next to it. So you can see that, that screening in that area basically went from about five feet up to anywhere from 30 to 40 feet direct line of sight. So that was a big improvement on that part.
Yeah, I like that one a lot. And then I like also that there's no parking. So alone, it just has where it turns over there and you maintain as much buffer it seems. It's definitely a significant improvement.
Originally, they're supposed to be like close to each other, right?
Right. And what happened there, Peter, is in doing that, although the, the garages create a nice buffer from headlights and from noise, the existing vegetation that Jesse just referred to in, in working with Gene, the neighbor there, we all felt that leaving as much vegetation there as possible was the most beneficial in having a fence and then separating the garages. And to your point, Brian, in the other location to the left there, there's a decent vegetation buffer there already that is on the Maple Brook property. And there, the scouring area of the undeveloped site is really right at the end of those garages. So we're really not removing buffer there to put those garages. So there, sliding them together makes better sense because you're not putting the garages where trees are currently located, where on the one on the right hand corner, it made better sense to leave as many of the existing trees there as possible and then separate the garages. So it's two different approaches due to the existing conditions.
Yeah, because the one on the left originally it had the parking between. And then that was from the neighbors' response and they just wanted to move that.
I actually recommended it to be a better buffer to slide them together just to make sure that we had, as I've described to the board and also to the neighbors, the peak of the garage will probably be about 13 feet, you know, a nine foot knee wall. And then, you know, a seven on 12 pitch will get you to a 13 and 14 foot peaked roof. And that essentially winds up being their visual barricade. That's much better than a six foot fence.
And Jim, because I mentioned before with one of the projects before that was adjacent to Maple Brook, are these plans, are they sufficient with what they're noting to maintain as a vegetative buffer?
So you mean, you want to make sure that what's a vegetative buffer remains a vegetative buffer?
Yeah, because I mean, I think they're definitely been working in good faith, but just down the road. I don't know, Peter, you were involved that or Brian, but there was that one project where it was designated buffer.
Yes, they, they.
And then it was the whole issue about is that a vegetative buffer? Because it didn't have the word.
So Jesse, perhaps, so what they're going to do is a past project that had some real issues with the definition of a buffer essentially. So I don't know if there's an ability maybe on the site plan to demarcate where the vegetative setback would be, whatever that, what is it? Between the property line and the garage.
Yeah.
You could put a note on the plan that says to be, to remain vegetated or something of that nature.
Okay.
So that, you know, the town has a little bit of teeth later on.
Definitely.
And I mean, I don't think it really applies to this one because.
No, but we had the issue, so why not?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Get it, get it on, yeah. I don't see it being a big issue per se, but.
Okay.
I mean, you, you're working very well with the neighbors, so. Why do you have to have it?
And then I think the other area that we can move to is building five. So we had shown some concepts last time, some potential adjustments to make for that building to try to take its presence off the road more. And we've done that with the updated plan. What we did was we essentially rotated it clockwise that really did a big shift off of the eastern corner of the building to give it off. It was before at about 110 feet on that corner from the edge of the road. And now we're at 137 feet plus or minus. We, the other thing we did to help with that is we looked at the grades. I had mentioned that maybe I can get a foot or two down lower to try to take some of it down. So I had to look at the drainage. I had to look at the sewer. We had to look at the retaining wall nearby, existing grades. So I, we had to take a lot in and see what we could do. We ended up only being able to drop it down a foot, but we did make that effort and I was able to get it down at least another foot. But what we think the biggest improvement was, was we are able to maintain some significant trees, existing ones that are there now, three 36 inch diameter trees, which I show on this, this darker green along the frontage. And then there's another three trees that are existing at around 18 to 24 inch in diameter that are more easterly. So there's about six trees along the frontage that we're going to be able to maintain and keep. And then what we also did is we add this meandering berm that goes between the existing trees and the proposed ones we have shown along the parking. That berm's going to be, you know, three to four feet wide, a couple of feet tall. And then you're going to put some shrubs on top of that. That's going to break up the massing in front. That's going to be a nice feature to have some curb appeal as well. And we have that not as a linear feature, but something more meandering, again, the aesthetic appeal to it. And then we show some proposed trees along there to kind of fill in the gaps, if you will, with the existing ones. And also to really help with that, that buffering along the frontage. So we think between that approach of the new trees, the existing, the added berm, lowering the building another foot, got a nice belt and suspender approach and spinning the building as well. We, we've done pretty much all we think we can do to try to help with that building getting it off the road and reducing its presence.
What's the height difference, I guess, of the berm? Like how high is it actually going to be?
So we've got it now where it's about one to two feet above where the parking grade is. And then you're going to put shrubs on top of that. And shrubs are typically three to five feet. So you're going to get that added, that's really going to block the cars probably more than anything else, but it'll help also to visually take your eye off of the building, just put it somewhere. And then you're going to have the trees that are going to be mixed into that just on the other side of it. And then you're going to have trees existing on the front of it. So you're going to have some variation going from the frontage towards the parking lot and the vegetation that's going to be there.
Yeah, I like the berm. I guess the reason I wonder is because at Victory, I think it's, it's successful there in a way, but it's also huge. So I mean.
That's an extreme, if I can.
I figure it won't be like that.
Two, two questions. Explain what you mean by you've located the building. You actually did a three six two in the building.
We spun it. So it was a little bit tilted. We just evened it out. If you remember last time, we had the building more falling, falling parallel with the road. But now we've got the building parallel with the buildings in back. So we've got a line building five with the buildings back more.
The bottom right corner kind of held and then it pivoted.
So, yeah, we pivoted on the western corner, front corner.
If I could put my two cents in as far as the berm is, I'm not sure which one, for seeing the building in landscape, what are they going to do? Personally, I don't like the berm. I think if I pull out every day to see the berm, I don't.
Well, that was my concern. Victory, that one's gigantic. It's ugly. So, I mean, this one's certainly.
I'm not sure seeing the building in the landscape you're doing would look better than the berm. It's just in my, in my opinion.
I guess if they committed to kind of lower shrubs and things like that, then it's certain that purpose that you don't have to have. Because I kind of agree with you. I wonder, what is the vegetative buffers?
Peter, if I could comment, I think, I think the term berm may be a little visually in our own minds, creating that large berm.
You, you, you know what I'm.
I do. I know exactly what you're doing. We built Victory, so I know what you're talking about. Our goal here is not to create a permanent berm like you would see in industrial projects. Our goal here is to create what was talked about at the original meeting, which was to create a landscape device that just took the curse off the grills of the cars and the, in, in any of the headlights in the evening hours. And the goal here is really more of a mulch planting bed berm. Something as Jesse described, might be two or three feet, four feet wide, has a maximum elevation of like 18 inches. More mulch with a quality shrubbery on top of it. So that way there, it's, it's really more of a landscape element. It's not really, it's not going to be seen as a berm. It's going to be seen as a variable topography piece that has shrubberies on it. And what Jesse and his landscape people are trying to do was weave it within new trees and old trees, make it more natural. So it's not just a line going down the street. So it's more, it's, it's a significant, it's more just a elevated mulching bed is a better way to describe it.
That's why you need architects describing things in the.
I mean, because personally, the word berm when I look at, it's like it's institutional. You shouldn't have crossed this line.
I mean, Jim, is there, I don't know if this is beyond the purview of the board, but is there a way that during, they could do like a grading and then we can go out to kind of say? I imagine probably not because we had to make a decision.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I guess we know that, like you're saying, it's not like a victory. I don't know what the grade change is there, but this is certainly much less.
It's about eight and nine.
Yeah.
So my name is Paul.
Yeah.
You know, with the berm.
Yeah. This is, this is more of a landscape feature. And then the only other comment I'd make is we, we, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we, we're very committed to on this westerly front. If you could just put your cursor in the landscape trees, right, right, right in there. We really want to be able to pick a few more trees from the site and relocate them there. Okay? I'd like to put two or three trees there if I can. I have this study that I need to get out there with an oborist, but we believe that we can relocate at least two trees to that location, which would give us a eight, nine inch caliber tree that's 25, 27 feet tall on day one. And we're committed to doing that. And I think that's going to be that whole character of the streetscape not look so new. Because it's going to, at that point, we will be up to about six or seven pre-existing trees along that roadway. And some of them are very significant. So I just wanted to reinforce that.
Yeah, I think, I definitely really like that, that keep the trees along mechanic screen and keeping that buffer. The only other question I guess I have, because I'd like that better, but then I wonder about, could that, could the building still get moved back potentially a little further away from the street? And I don't know. I mean, I think I would open that to a public to see how others kind of feel.
What are we now with the new design?
Because this is building five.
So we're at 137 and 117 from the corners. The 117 obviously being the west of the corner, the 137 on the other.
And I know that part of the issue, I can see with the retaining wall there that you have a significant grade change. So is that the main issue that you see about, if you did try to move it up, say, 10 feet or five feet, or I guess 10 feet would be more, five, I don't think, I don't know how much difference you're making, but.
That's certainly part of it, but it really is the amenity space that was a lot of effort into it. And the design was purposely designed to look out into this, this green space that we have in the center of the site. And any way that we move that building back, it starts to eat into that. We really did also with the parking lot, we looked at how we could, we do that. We can't move that back anymore either because then that starts to affect the placement of the clubhouse. So everything starts to have a cascading effect on the design. We really felt that the way we have it now of the clubhouse, almost lining up nicely with the back of the building here, the views aren't obstructed. If we start to move that building back, then this, this whole amenity space right here starts to get impacted.
What is the, between the building, it looks like a walkway that goes in a notch.
This one?
No, right hand, the dead center of the building.
Yeah.
Right there. And what is the distance of the building to the first point of that notch? I was trying to look at the number of parking spaces, right, you have. It's, it's more curiosity than.
Yes, probably roughly 10 feet.
Yes. So they moved it back to, to be more aligned with.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, toward that arch. Yeah.
Yeah. So if you go back 10 more feet, you're cutting right through.
I can kind of see a little bit too, because I see the clubhouse are just nice. They definitely kind of opens up to that open space. And then I kind of get what you're saying, that you move a building five, then it's kind of crouched, it's encroaching, kind of creeping into that. But, yeah, I mean, I guess I would just want, be interested to see how the rest of it feels.
Yeah, I, I think that this is probably the last time moving up. Too prominent on 140 in that we're trading the views of the tenants for the views of the inhabitants of Belling. And there is all of that space back there. There is no, from what I understand, no engineering hurdles to move it back, but it's more about preserving the views for the tenants. And so that, I think that's the tension. But I really do think that this is the last minimum obstacle that we need to sort of address and figure out.
Which I guess one question I would add too is that you could, as a piece, it seems like reasonably, if you took building five and the clubhouse and moved those together upward, or that, I don't know, potentially that could be something that could be like that.
Well, we are.
I guess you'd have to take that retaining wall and you're kind of.
Yeah. See, everything's really, the way we looked at this site was we had the wetland resource on the right hand side. That really drove where we could start the project. So we started from there. And we are set at pretty much minimum design standards, moving from right to left from that point. So we have parking, axle siles, then we got a front space, we have the front green space in front of the buildings. We are not giving ourselves a lot of green space in the front and back of these buildings, especially that building one. That really drives then you have the axle sile and the parking behind that. So that then sets where we can put the clubhouse and that amenity and being able to rotate that upwards would be a challenge. You know, that does start to squeeze us a little bit. And then to still move it from the left, if I start to move that building five back, that means I got to now swing that retaining wall back out, which then starts pushing the grades up towards the, the amenity space and starts to tighten out all that. So you don't have that, that nice area that we have right now. I've got, it will impact engineering. It'll impact my sewer design, the drainage design. My grading will completely change. We, we did a lot of effort to try to get that building back off the road and make the adjustments we did here. And we think really the landscaping is what's going to be the improvement that, that helps and that we can have more control over. I understand the concern about people driving by, but I don't, I don't see it being out of character for this area at all. Especially if you look to the left and what we have for development there and down the road. I think this is, is very far back off the road and it's going to be a nice building and also nice curb appeal.
Well, I guess, oh, sorry. I was going to say, I'd love to get Ray's opinion on this. Just to curious here, what do you think?
I'd love to. Yeah. I was saying, my question would be with the berm and the shrubs, will that block all of the lights between the parking spots and the streets themselves?
When you say the light levels or the poles themselves?
The light from the headlights of the cars parking there.
Oh, okay. That was the intent, was to try to, to take that, that off. And as I had mentioned, that, that landscape feature, the, the, the shrubs will be built up about a foot and a half as.
And they'll be very tight?
Yes. Let me see if I can go to the, bear with me.
I, I think that's a better idea, especially because when people are just driving on the road and someone's parking, let's say they have their high beam on by mistake. It won't distract any drivers and cause any accidents by mistake. And concerning moving the building back, I could see how you have the road next to the clubhouse on the right. If you, if you move it back 10 feet, it could, it would definitely impact that road and you cannot really narrow that road back. So I could see where you're coming from in terms of not being able to move the clubhouse north by 10 feet.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I think, I definitely like the pivot.
Was a great idea.
The buffer, I think, is key. I guess I'm not dead set on trying to move it back, but I could see how Brian mentions about that to me would be the biggest impact is that building up the street. And that, I guess, in character with the neighborhood, I do kind of think the westerly is kind of what we're trying. Like, I mean, that definitely just kind of sticks.
Obviously, you've done your homework. Any idea how far back that first building westerly is in comparison with this?
It's, it's 200 feet. It's, it's 200 feet. It's further back, but it's also taller than our structure. So, so these structures will be, we have a varying cornice line from 42 to 45 and a half feet. That structure is 67 feet to 70 feet tall. So we don't have a peaked roof.
It was basically.
Okay. And, and that was intentional to avoid that. It just gives it much more.
So by, by setting, you were able to set the building down on the book to be grading?
Yep.
I'm kind of curious, standing back from the world, how that much difference that puts.
I know, I guess sometimes, you could do, I mean, I don't know if you'd be amenable to, I mean, you could do kind of like a section where you get a perspective, kind of see the angle of like at five feet, how much of the. I guess you've also done it through the renderings. The renderings are probably the most useful.
I wish you did the building.
But I think, and Jim mentioned this too, and then like you said, Peter, is that, because initially when I heard the, the video from the last meeting, I was like, oh, that's great. It's going to be lower than westerly. But I think perceptually, you're going to perceive it similar to the west. Because with a flat roof.
Yeah, and the prominence and the location are all up there. Just because it really is.
Yeah.
It's going to be out of play. And, you know.
I guess, Brian, what would you, teams, do you think if they, in your ideal world, to ship it back on 10 feet?
I would, I, I don't know what's possible. I'm not an engineer.
Yeah.
Too big and too close to the road. One solution would be to make it a three store front, but I don't think that's a. One solution would be to make it a three-story thing, but I don't think that's a viable solution.
There is, I guess, in the in the bylaws, right, Jim, that it has to be obviously economically feasible for the applicant. So that would be.
That's what they have to go back and refund all their.
Yeah, that's a whole, yeah.
I would want to point to the screen. So I was asked about that that landscape feature. So here's a blow up, if you will, of the landscaping. You can see all those little dots and circles along that that meandering feature. Those are all proposed shrubs and planting. So it's going to be a very dense landscape. Buffer, if you will, that will be put in between the new trees and the existing ones. So we feel though that's it's a pretty significant impact and also improvement for the design. So I appreciate all of the effort that you've done and all the work you put into it. And all of the changes you've made. I really do appreciate it. This is the last thing I'm going to figure out.
I know one.
Well, I hear a portion, but.
Yeah, that doesn't go out, I think, big thing that, you know, that we need to figure out.
And I guess I have one kind of crazy question, though. It's, I guess it'd be up to us at the board, but is there any possibility if they went to a three-story and give them a center for the building all the way back and let the other story in that, or would that be? Yeah, I guess that's true. Because I guess I guess that's the obvious flasher, but for for the applicant, going to three stories, just a no stop, non-start, right?
It does create a financial hardship. I would also mention that go to five stories creates a financial hardship too. Because the building codes change when you go from four-story to five-story.
Oh, yeah.
And the the regulations and the way you have to sheath the building and the way you have to protect the building changes due to its height. And it it's not really worth doing unless you're going to know more than five stories. So I wouldn't advocate for that.
Yeah, I figured it probably, I figured I just may as well throw it out.
Thanks. Ask you a question.
Yeah.
What is our high regulation? What's the way we act way of looking for it?
Uh, so in business zone, I believe it's forty feet, like thirty-five. Thirty-five in this. I know for residential purposes, thirty-five.
I guess.
I was going after forty-three?
I think it's forty-six in your application. The thirty thirty-five in this, we're already loving.
So I suppose my question back to the board is. And I I appreciate what you're saying. It's like, oh, like your face. Would we really see a good difference?
So just a quick point here, maybe it's helpful to look at the two industrial buildings that are that. So as part of our commitment to the town, we've acquired those parcels, no buildings will be raised. I think the intent is to really improve the look. On one forty corridor there substantially, seemed like a pretty fair trade-off. The parent visual effect of that.
Do you have any intentions for the use of that, those properties moving forward or? You're always going to take the what's there, you're going to raise what's there.
Yeah. Nothing yet. It's a commercial use we, business use, so we'll. The goal is to build this and then figure out what kind of advantages might be supported by the tenants and.
And I I know the other, and this was talking to Jim, but about for site improvements, specifically kind of for the road to the town. I mean, that could be another occupants' floor for things that become like sidewalks or other kind of amenities that can add to the mechanics.
Absolutely. I think I think this application, I don't, it doesn't show on there the tempo wide of the use path that runs along the frontage of this. But I think there's an obvious opportunity for the next path site that goes in to continue that along towards the neighbor's street intersection.
I really think it's important to note, so the the requirement for this zoning district is a twenty-foot front yard offset. So we could have a building thirty-five feet tall, twenty feet off. Instead, we have a building that's forty-six feet tall, that's over a hundred feet off the road. So I think it would be a much more dramatic impact by right, having a building thirty-five feet tall, twenty feet from the right of them versus what we had. So I think we've made a significant compromise and improvement by getting it to where it is now.
Yeah, and I think, like Brian Salisbury was saying, I think we definitely appreciate everything that you guys have done. And you've definitely been showing really great signs of working with the neighbors. You know, obviously, and as you, I'm sure you know, but these, for forty B's especially, it's definitely because it's usually a pretty lengthy process. And I think it's a good sign that we're kind of just narrowing in on some of these elements.
I I I, again, I, from what's there to this, this is a high-quality project. A lot of thought and effort is going into it, a lot of work with the neighbors. This is a good thing for the town, grow, to get over our subject to these kinds of projects and that we it's it's a eyesore of what's there now. So this is a great deal for the town, it's also a great deal for the applicant. And I think that there's a symbiotic relationship and sort of brass tacks. I don't think we're comfortable, I don't know if we're, but trading the views of the people at the pool with the with the views of the people that have to drive by, the brass tacks, what can we do to solve the problem? I don't, I don't think it's a problem once, most of that, because I don't, if we say ten feet, would that really be what makes the difference where you would be up there and say, yeah, that, I'm glad we got that ten feet, that's all the difference in the world. But that ten feet would make a huge difference for the project quality. I don't know if it would with somebody driving by in a car at thirty-five miles an hour. Around and around we go.
I'm not sure if they can back.
It's better than nothing. It is. I'm so in the town that I'm from, something with this building, I have a certain account. It's like, but it's it's right there and it looms over me and it's noticeable and it's kind of, you get used to it after a while. But I think we need to be mindful of.
I I think, I think, I agree that we do. We also have to be mindful of the whole change in the area as comparison with it's going to happen. That, yeah, it's going to be a big building. But the overall change will be able to time, where's our trade-off as a town too?
That's a, that's a big question.
Because I, you know, what is supposed to do, certainly with the whole, what's going to be there? So it's where the trade-offs are.
If it's a good project all the way around, it's a good deal for both parties all the way around, let's just figure it out. Thank you.
Nothing.
Do we know how close the Lindemire Road building is and the height is?
Don't. That's an awfully close building. I don't know the height of that one, but you know, I would guess probably in the thirty.
It just feels like that's more of a distraction or an eye point for anybody who's ever tried it. This building is the shieldiest, dangerous, lots of mature trees.
And I I guess maybe for the sake of the meeting tonight, we certainly could kind of table, I guess, this discussion. And then I don't know if maybe you'd be at least amenable to having your team, your architectural team at least look at it, consider it, and then at the next meeting, we can all kind of, because I know that at least for now, I know that talking with Jim in this that we could kind of, it sounds like the consensus from the board is that I think we're at a spot, a place that maybe we can start to consider drafting.
You know, I think after you hash out a number of items, I mean, potentially at the end of tonight, if we're at a good spot, we could start considering drafting something, but I certainly would recommend not closing just yet so that we can incorporate any changes that Justin may have made or anything like that into the plan. Just a question in regards to the the setback. The the separation from that Westerly back corner of the building to the retaining wall appears to be something like fifteen feet or so perhaps. Just trying to scale it off with, you know, using a parking space and your parking space are nine feet wide.
Oh, right.
So, I mean, if you're talking ten feet, is there a need to keep that fifteen-foot distance? I mean, if they're talking, if we could gain that ten feet and and that means you still have it's only a five or six feet off that corner to the wall, that means everything else stays the same. You know.
Yeah, good. And the existing trees are there, and I'm seeing the lighter greens are the new trees.
Yes.
How tall is the distant trees roughly?
Yeah, the the, Jesse, if you could point to the one right around the center. This one, that that one goes over sixty feet tall. It's thirty-six inches wide at the base.
Yeah.
The other two are more than fifty-five.
And and they're like oaks or maple or.
Yep.
So they're not pines.
They're not pines. There's a couple of pines, the the smaller ones after those first three down there. They're a mixture of deciduous and everything trees.
But you guys, the big three trees, the oaks, I mean, obviously, once you start kind of clearing the area and getting prep in the site, even then you don't know, I guess there's fifty-fifty with some of them, right, that they'll still be able to be kept and you don't know exactly the condition of.
No, we actually, they should be able, we went through a lot of effort actually to move the drainage system back. Look at the grading again. That was part of what we, some of our homework that we did from the last meeting to this one is we saw what we could do in the design to make sure that those trees could be maintained so that stay out of the canopy root zone and to not impact them at all. So that, what we're showing is a real thing, those should be able to stay.
Yeah, because I just know that, which is great that you love it, but obviously sometimes with the best intentions that there's only so much you can do if you're, you know, but it sounds like you've already loved that.
Yeah, we moved the drainage system back to get rid of.
The root system.
How much, you know, there's just trees that they're going to give us a little more. I have that form, big building, right up in this. Trying to look at all avenues.
Yeah, they're there, they're there. Absolutely. And I appreciate that they're that they're keeping them.
You down streets to the west of it, there's not any way included that wide form.
But I can kind of see what Jim's saying, that to shift it to ten feet doesn't look like it would be not possible, at least just looking at this, but of course, I don't know with all the site engineering.
Well, once I could just sum it up in, perhaps, recall to that suggestion. We thought we looked at this pretty hard and perhaps we need to look at it even harder. But we are balancing many, many, many things here. We have residents that live at the ground level and they walk out. And being a property manager for six communities in the Commonwealth, most of the families that will rent here rent at the ground level because of that walkout. The three-bedroom units are in the corners of these buildings. So that corner of the building is a three-bedroom unit and there's walkouts there. So the fifteen feet is important to have space where you walk out of your unit and you're just not at a six-and-a-half-foot retaining wall that goes down, which I'm going to have to have a fence on anyways. The more I move back, the larger that retain wall goes up, seven and a half, perhaps eight feet. So I have to move the retaining wall and the fifteen-foot buffer together. And that becomes a challenge. Now I start sliding the clubhouse down in the outdoor patio amenity down, and that starts impacting other utilities. So it's one thing versus the other. The other thing that this project has done, and excellent job with, and the D H C B Department of Housing Development has commented on during the P L stage, was most of these multifamily affordable communities are averaging twenty-three units per acre. We're at eighteen units per acre here. We've shown a maximum build plan, three hundred and fifty units. And we didn't want to do that because it doesn't really help the quality of our resident that we attract to the facility. Because there's no green space. This is an eighteen-unit-per-acre density, which is one of the lowest densities that you'll find in in the twenty-three unit-per-acre density is probably exceeded at the Westerly and other communities, the jobs that you use the looking at. So the green space is important to us, but also the topography of the green space. We have a we have a pinch point there between the building corner, the retaining wall, the leasing center. The road is locked into coming in off the traffic signal. If I didn't come in there, I may have had a little bit more ability to to design the site slightly differently. But at the end, it's, there's a lot going on there as we've considered this. The other quarter moved thirty-three feet because it could be accommodating. And and we've done that. So I just wanted to point out that there are a lot of conditions there that relate to the way people live as well as just the physical things. So I'm not, I didn't want my comments to come off defensive, I just wanted to be informative.
No, that's, that's definitely off. Well, another question I have is slightly off topic. What is the retaining wall?
It's a segmented blockboard.
Cemented blockboard. Could you give the next, I guess this would be further down, but could you provide like a photo example of that?
Oh, sure. Just because it it starts, essentially, it won't be seen from the street, Jesse, because it it's only about one foot on the front piece, and then as it curls around the back, that's where the gray drops.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay, because I was just curious because sometimes when you have, and I'm sure this is nicely designed, but just to be like, if it is.
Yeah, not.
Oh, absolutely.
So that will be a black, you know, spin vertically spindled fence, you know. Won't be a chain link fence or anything like that, be a black barricade fence.
Sorry, I missed that one. Where, what location was that fence?
That would be on the.
Oh, yeah, got you. I would say real quick while I'm talking about fences, on the right side of the property closest to Curtis Pond, that area there, so there's an existing chain link fence there now. We talked in conservation about it this morning. They are going to, or they may be of the mindset to request some fencing to remain along there. The reason for that is it really holds back any debris that comes down the corridor and maybe they're trying to make its way to Curtis Pond. It does a really good job of that. I don't believe they're expecting it now, but perhaps they're. They're. I've fallen over and we've asked them to put it back up several times.
Is that more towards a furnished?
So essentially from where that first tree, not that tree, but the one, but that one to basically the garage, straight, straight up. I mean, you could play with it, do whatever you think is aesthetically pleasing, but some sort of barrier because of the trash eventually to the jurisdictional areas. So in talking with Ann Matthews this morning, she thought it would be appropriate to request that I figured out just to get you guys to know.
What kind of fence is it?
Couple of things.
Sure.
Bus stop. Where are you guys thinking?
So we, I know Ron Moller has reached out to GATRA. Ron, are you, are you online?
I am online, yes.
Have you heard anything back from them, has been any further?
I haven't. Unfortunately, I have not yet. No, we did reach out to GATRA as part of that meet the E N S submission that we made requesting that they evaluate a bus stop. I suspect, just based on past experience with GATRA, they're not going to commit to such a bus stop at this stage of the game. They will evaluate that once the project is built to see what kind of demand they may expect from that and then react accordingly.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ron, I don't mean to cut you off, but GATRA doesn't do much of anything. I'm talking more to school buses.
Okay. I don't have any provision about keeping it school.
No, I meant, where where do you plan on having? No, I meant, where do you plan on having these kids congregate? Is there going to be some sort of shelter, that type of thing?
I don't think we've shown this shelter, but we certainly can.
Just want to mention, you may want to reach out to the bus company. Bellingham doesn't, well, in my experience, they can differ, doesn't like to go in and turn around anywhere. They prefer to stop right in the main drag, whereas Frankel buses will pull in and turn around. So you may want to reach out, because Bellingham may just say it's at the end. They're probably not going to want to pull in. I would like to have this here for them at least. It wouldn't be the only school bus stopping on one side.
Well, while Ron's here, and he's still awake, I was wondering if, I was wondering if he has the plan, or I could pull up the plan of the intersection. I know a couple of the board members that asked me offline, you know, because I sometimes forget that they're not privy to all the planning board progress. So looking at, I know Ron provided an early plan for the widening of the road, for allowing for the left turn lane in. I have it posted online, Ron, I could, I could pull it up myself if you prefer, or if you have it, either way.
I have it, I don't know how, can I share that with you on the screen?
Yeah, yeah, are you, are you?
I am, well, somewhat.
All right, let me give you access, and you should be able to share it now.
So can you all see that?
Yep. Yeah, so this is a combination of what Lincoln's proposing across the street.
Correct. And so what I'm showing, what I'm showing in black here, essentially, is the proposal by Lincoln Properties, their new subdivision road, and the widening that they're proposing to provide their left turn lane into their site. And then the areas that you see in red is the additional widening proposed as part of this project, where the main access driveway is located directly opposite the Lincoln Properties warehouse driveway. It shows the widening to create a left turn lane into our site. We do propose a shared-use path along the entire site frontage, that ten-foot-wide share-use path for both pedestrians and bicycles, as well as a crosswalk across one forty to connect with the new sidewalk that's being proposed by the Lincoln Properties along the north side of one forty and into their subdivision road. So if we continue that onto the next sheet here, then this is sort of the end of that path, which will end right at that, right out only driveway. And then as I think Russell mentioned before, they do control, or the applicant controls, the next two parcels, and that, once that is proposed for development, that could be extended further.
Yeah, so that, that design is great. That stemmed from a lot of our conversations of having with Lincoln, but then after the Lincoln Warehouse, we did a study of the Route one forty corridor too, to see what other improvements we could do there. So this is one of the improvements we can do there. Obviously, there's, this corridor is, you know, starting to get heavily burdened by both vehicles and pedestrians, so any kind of improvements we can do to span upon that, to improve that is, you know, significantly beneficial, because, you know, where it's one piece, this is one piece of the puzzle, and, you know, as they start to add up, it starts to get somewhat congested, so it's always great to, one, to do these things where you're adding the turn lanes widening, also adding the shared-use paths, to get some people off, out of their cars and onto these paths. Lincoln is also doing across the street full sidewalk from Blackstone Street all the way down to where basically Lindemeyer is going, or is, and, you know, obviously, where the town is investing significant dollars to improve town center because of, you know, all this congestion that's moving along there. Well.
That's great. Yeah, I guess, well, Ron is on the phone. I know, because early on, one of my biggest concerns with crap, is I know the Westerly, once that came in, that seemed like it impacted traffic on one forty. So I guess, two things that I would be curious to hear from Ron would be what his thoughts are about having a traffic light there, if that's most likely going to happen. Then the other question would be, the residents at Maple Brook wanted to hear about a traffic analysis impact on Maple. So Ron did touch on that a little bit, but I'm sure, Ron, do you have that available?
Yes, yes, so with regard to signalizing the intersection, what the analysis show is that, see, the way the signal warrants work is you have to have two things. You have to have a certain minimum volume of traffic on the main line, on Route one forty, which Route one forty certainly does, that's not the, that's not the issue. And then you also have to have a certain minimum volume on the side streets, and that is about two hundred vehicles per hour for eight hours of a day. The Lincoln Warehouse project, and their analysis, what they've done is they've shown that they will not reach that threshold on their driveway. What we've shown on our driveway is that we won't even come close to that threshold. In fact, the highest exiting volume for the, for our driveway is about sixty-two vehicles on the morning peak. So you're not even kind of close to that. What may then trigger the need for a light is the combination of the Lincoln Warehouse project and the Lovessa Corporation's residential project. So between the two of those, you may then actually meet the warrants for a light. And that's, I think, why the town has the condition for Lincoln Warehouse to, for Lincoln Properties to monitor this intersection for a period of several years.
Right, so, yeah, so we've conditioned that with Lincoln, and they're actually running the conduit to the intersection. So once that light is required, all you got to do is put a pass on, basically, everything, everything's already there. It's ready to go. But that was another condition of Lincoln, and that's, that's why when this application came forward, we discussed early on, obviously, this is an obvious area where this has to be your, your main entrance exit, because we're expecting a light to go there.
And we've been coordinating with the Lincoln, with the H P on this design, to make sure that the conduit that they do install is not in the way of the extra widening that we're doing out here, and their latest plans do show the conduit in the correct place.
Because I was curious, because I think the last meeting, listening to the last meeting, was the first time I heard about a traffic. That's why I was curious, to at least see for the future what most likely will happen, are we most likely going to have traffic?
Right, and obviously, without a light, left turns out of both the Curtis Apartments and out of the Lincoln Warehouse project would be at significant delays. There's no question about that, the calculations show a level of service F. But there is adequate, there's still ample capacity to process that traffic. So it simply means you're going to have longer delays for traffic trying to make a left turn out of the site. It doesn't mean that it's an unsafe condition. Safety is mostly related to sightlines, which we've shown that we have adequate sightlines. But, but once a signal is installed, left turns out of this driveway actually would operate at an acceptable level of C during the peak hours. So it's, it's in all of our best interest to install a light at this location.
Okay, so you think that probably is just a given?
Well, yeah, I think all parties, and the town's actually played a role in this, to push the O T to get to a point where they're they're comfortable with approving a light there. So Lincoln is pushing, I know Campanelli has participated in some of those conversations. Lovessa, who's proposing something back here potentially, is participating in those conversations, and the town is certainly pushing for it as well.
And Lincoln is also, what's their operation, required at the rush hour times to, until they get a light. They'll like to solve to have a police vehicle. Because the truck, the truck coming out of, taking out of the block too late to stop traffic, essentially, at the rush hour.
So a question I have, if you don't mind me asking, if you don't come late to the party, what proposes here on red for the apartment complex, who's handling those road developments? Lots of insurance that that came out.
That's part of our, that's part of our project. Everything that Ron's showing in red.
You guys, you guys.
It's our side of the roadway improvement.
I hadn't really seen that in plans for a site. Maybe I just missed it.
It's probably not in this plan set, but it was in the application under the traffic.
That's, that's, so it's not in the Bull or Civil Engineer in the set, so that's easy to oversee.
The traffic studies that we had, that did make recommendations or suggestions for improvement.
Yeah, so the one forty quarter study that Lincoln, as part of their condition, they funded the study. So we hired D S C group, which actually, you know, one of our peer review engineers, to look at that corridor, and they made, they made a number of recommendations, ways to improve the flow of traffic, the, both increasing pedestrian connections and multimodal connections. Obviously, recommendations on how to improve the center of town and all, and each of the lights, and make sure that they're each talking to each other. You know, those, those recommendations reach the three million dollars though, in terms of, you know, what those improvements would look like.
All right, so then in the role of a special permit, then we would be looking for some sort of mitigation for impact, traffic impact, and all of those, there's been discussions in terms of the traffic mitigation.
Well, no, there hasn't been too much discussion in that regard. I mean, it's certainly, you know, well within your purview to discuss those. I think this is one piece of the puzzle, that, you know, adding a burden to that corridor. But you certainly could, you know, open a dialogue with the applicant on, you know, some, some additional mitigation to assist the town. I mean, Lincoln provided ample funds. You know, Lovessa, I'm sure will have that conversation when that time comes. You know, Campanelli with, with the industrial complex, obviously, this is an industrial, but, but they, you know, provided significant funds to help us leverage that grant to get the intersection of the industry done.
With huge differences. So I guess then, I think we should probably have a back conversation. I do, I agree with Brian, the biggest impact for this project would be traffic. There's, like Jim said, there's three million dollars of improvements that the town is sort of looking at to deal with the traffic that's already sort of burdening this corridor. And this will impact the corridor, there's no question that this is going to impact. And it's certainly not responsive for the traffic conditions that are, it is, it is, but I think it would be fresh reasons that, that they've done a lot of great work every day, like the ten-foot, the new path, widening of roads. If there's some additional contribution that the applicant can make towards the further that three million dollar price tag that the town is looking for, if there's any improvement that we can make to that roadway greatly improves the lives of the people that live there.
If I could just make a suggestion for the Asian home, like down the avenue to the path. And I know it was discussed earlier, it's a five year term, remember it. We need to assert through our school options, how, do we have enough figure at one point?
Yes.
And I forget, that's why I move on, just messing.
Yeah, okay, I read it for the first meeting, but we do have a, we have a school effect letter that I can resubmit to the board, but it's very low. It's, it's in the vicinity of twenty-two to twenty-seven addition of school children. But please don't quote me on that.
No, no, I would say much higher would probably be yours.
Well, it's a very interesting problem, and what we've done is, we've looked at it from three perspectives. A national level, National Homeowners, Home Builders Association level, where they track school children. And I really want to reset this to you, because we have an executive summary on this, and how it goes into apartments. You have to remember, the majority of the apartments here are one bedrooms, okay? We have twenty-five three-bedroom units, and I believe we have about somewhere between sixty and seventy-two bedroom units.
So maybe we don't need to chase that down that rabbit hole. I just, you know, we both own my school, so it's always something we need to think about, and look at the entire picture, and don't take mine, maybe I'm pretty much a failure of the project, but will also impact in our finance, police. This certainly will have more falls, five departments will have more runs. So a project decided definitely impacts the whole, the whole town, not just the traffic. I see something like that with the whole vision of town.
And I think about it in the effort.
Get taxes and hopefully we can have more of this fund.
It's, it's interesting, I was thinking about schools, when you were talking about, the location of this is that, I wonder, for a middle school and high school student that live in this, would they walk? It's so close.
I think they could walk, but we have a bus and car for them, you know?
Well, yeah, it's a big one. Would you live within a mile or? I wonder what that would look like.
Chances are, if the kids would walk up to Blackstone Street, and I guess good exercise walking that hill.
Anyways, it's less than a mile, and it goes by a police station on the way.
But it does, it's that real, but I have walked it myself, because I wanted to understand it, but, you know,
date my age, when I first started going to school, we used to walk home for lunch. I don't know if anyone here did that, but, and then we'd walk back. Now, people have lived one-third of a mile from the school, they don't even walk anywhere. So I don't know what the likeliness of that is, but, but it is an interesting concept.
And it actually drives with you, pretty convenient, actually. I'm sorry to get off the topic, but.
No, no.
I decided I like a little view, tie a picture, I was waiting to go.
So what are we thinking then for the next steps?
I got a couple of quick questions off of the notes, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll go with the easiest really quick. Five departments signed off, and all the ratings is for the five, right?
Not a formal sign off yet, so we did get requests to do submit a truck turn analysis, which we provided in the new set. We also had requests to add three additional hydrants to the layout, which we've also made adjustments to. There were also comments submitted by the D P W for water system adjustments, which we accommodated those in this new set. So this would have to, I'd have to just make sure the department sees it, and if you're looking for a formal response.
I want to make sure they're involved, that's all. I had a whole bunch of questions on this first one, but most of them from conservation. One of the things that does stick out is, and it's certainly not your fault to begin with, but stockpile materials that they are in the clearing of the land, which you're going to take off the site.
So there is approximately eight to ten thousand yards of material that will certainly leave the site, called unsuitable material. Then there's also stockpile of loam that some of it may be used, but I bet the majority of it will probably also leave the site, and that'll, those hopefully will be gone by winter time, so that's the plan. Not guaranteed, but that's the plan, but yeah, there's some material that will leave the site.
Now, a lot of that stuff was dumped there from Big Derek, right? Has anyone inspected it, has that, or has anyone looked at it?
Yeah. It's has that.
Well, it's just got some, spend this recycled materials at the top.
That was one of the big concerns. I don't know, wait up to.
Yeah.
A few more things. Just kind of buttoning up a bunch of stuff here, hours of construction. I got Monday. They got Monday through Friday, seven to six thirty, Saturday, seven to five and nothing on Sundays. Is that something that you want to consider ratcheting up a little bit? What do you, what do your guys thought? What do you typically do?
Um, I, I have no objections to those hours. Typically, we don't work that late. Okay, the construction industry just doesn't do that anymore. Um, the only thing I would add, this is not an industrial project, so we will not have that kind of scenario where we have a large concrete pore that sometimes goes into the evening to just do the curing process. Um, but those, those hours are not a problem for us.
I have a slight problem there. And, and I suppose if you, I see it almost in sections. I can beat up towards the two of others there, how seven AM might be a little uh, bracing for that. I'm sure maybe we can, you know, work together, work with neighbors that we adapt them and write it against their box will be adjusted a little bit. You guys think that's reasonable?
Sure. Well, I guess another question, slight, uh, slightly unrelated, but is there going to be any need for any blasting or anything on this site? Um, we haven't determined that crystal clear yet. There is a little bit of ledge over on the building one area that could be drilled and, and just ram away from it. But until we excavate around that ledge, um, it's not a huge knob, but it could be twenty and thirty feet wide. Okay, it's not a hundred and sixty feet wide. So it may be able to be drilled and popped without blasting, but to be determined. But it's not a huge blasting.
You can make comment on ours.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think seven AM seems to be the standard. You know, trade show early, the problem, I think you, you're aware of some of the other, you know, projects with the, I, I don't trust. And the conversation with people up over the road.
You're also going to be building these stages too, right? You're, you're going to build and fence off and build, fence off.
That is correct, except the phases won't be build one building and complete it and fence it off. It will be more, the foundation guy will go from one building to the next and then he's off the site. The framer will go from one building to the next and then he's off the site. The plumber will, so follow. So basically, um, we haven't quite decided which building will start first, but for this discussion, building number one is the one to the right of the leasing center and clubhouse. The next building is typically finished about twelve weeks after the first building, rough and tough. So that's a trade to move through. And to your point, Peter, as we begin to have residents in the facility, we have a completed job site, the leasing center, the parking areas, the fire access, the police access. It's, it's all working as an individual building. And then the construction site is on the other side of a construction fence. It's spread, has office, we're talking. And then we'll, we'll stagger through the site and finish at the exit over driveway.
Go back to that then, seven to five, Monday through Friday, seven to four, Saturday?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Is that typical of Jim?
That, yeah, so Saturday, I think, uh, we, we, based on, you know, concerns from neighbors, they tend to like to do a little bit earlier shutdown so they can have some peace on a Saturday evening, you know, and obviously Sundays we prefer, you guys. If there's no need for it, so, you know, no, no work on Sunday, so they can go out.
Yeah, and, and typically, um, I don't see this happening. Sunday no work is absolutely not an issue. Um, the, um, what I've had as a condition and other permits, if, if for some reason there's an odd trade that needs to work late due to an equipment rental or, or concrete, like an indicated or, I don't see this on the residential projects very much. We typically, um, let the police department know, so that way they, because they're the first ones to receive a phone call. Um, so we'll, we would say to the police department, um, due to this extreme situation, we need to be working on the job site a little bit later. We expect to be done by eight thirty. Okay, um, and then if they feel, feel the call, they understand it and can be responding to the neighbor. Um, I've not had to do that on residential project, but I'd like to have it as a provision if we need to.
I, and I, I could appreciate you saying, most trades, I would want to see heavy equipment operating eight o'clock at night, just for the residents. And I can appreciate that, that the former had equipment issues on the, and the Christian. I think have heavy equipment, you know, on that. You can avoid that.
Yeah, I wasn't referring to any earthwork or equipment or excavation equipment. It would really just be if there's a particular material. Like, I'll give a great example. Dealing with utility companies is brutal. Okay, absolutely brutal. And sometimes NSTAR won't show up till five o'clock in the evening to put service into the, the facility and I don't have control over that. And I've now waited six months to get them in. And if they show up and they want to put the wires in at five o'clock, it's, I, I've had it happen to me multiple times and that's really that extension that, that like that a little.
So if the board is comfortable with what we've done in the past is, uh, maybe not the police, but they've formed the building commissioner because then he has at least an understanding of, you know, those, those noisy trades or whatever it may be to give a little more insight to say, you know, yeah, that, that's not going to be overly impactful. Sure, you can stay in it for hours. Uh, but I think, and I appreciate that, but, um, but strongly certain, I'm sorry, please, person.
The police department is the first one of the neighbors going to call.
I don't know.
Peter, you got my cell phone now, what are you talking about?
Well, we'll talk later, don't worry. You know, letting bolt know wouldn't be a bad idea. Just because, you know, the cops are very focused. You're like, we don't know about this.
Right, exactly.
And they come down and you go, oh, no.
Branching off of, uh, working hours, I just had a question about, uh, idling for trucks, for example, especially early in the morning at about seven AM, uh, the neighbors and the butter, abutting residents might have a problem with that. Do you have, does Campanelli have any rules about trucks idling for more than five minutes, for example, when they're parked? Or like when they're removing, uh, excess excavated, excavated material?
Um, we don't, we don't have a, a best practice on, on an idling time. Um, we do have our site superintendents, especially in the, in the winter months, as, as vehicles are being started up in a cold weather to no startup prior to seven AM. That's an important piece. Um, that's, that's the typical thing that we please the most aggressively. Um, during, during normal work hours, during, once we get past that first thirty minutes in the morning, the entire community is, is either doing their own thing or left their units to do what they need to do. But it's that seven AM time that's important. Um, I think that there were some issues on the, uh, business part and we addressed them. So I don't have any issues with that.
I understand. Thank you. Uh, perhaps just be most cognizant of whenever there are any trucks, uh, or equipment right next to the apartment buildings up north and.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, fully understand.
So, um, one other thing, uh, so landscaping, I thought, you know, you guys really put a lot of thought into the landscape. One thing that's interesting, your opinion and also the boards is, uh, so behind Mass Diesel, so that the one all the way to the left there, uh, there's that garage, uh, directly behind it. And I know there's a bit of a slope there, but, uh, the one Mass Diesel goes, you got a clear shot of that, the back of that garage. I don't know if there's an opportunity to just put a couple, couple plants back there.
Sure.
Uh, that, that's really the only bald spot I, I think I saw there.
Want to dig at me? In, in terms of another spot, um, if you were how it's the, so you're, so building five and then there's a garage, right? And you keep moving towards the property line that's there, that narrow strip. Is that large enough to be vegetating?
We can certainly put something in there. I don't disagree with you, Brian. I, we've always, you know, with our partner Matt, we've always talked about, um, those areas having something there. And I think, I think it's just more of a drawing oversight than put the idea of Jesse John in his head.
Are you talking about right in this area right here?
We could certainly add some.
We have a significant grade drop. That was the reason there. Um, the grade at the top of it, I don't know if the wall, how you call it off, but that, the thought is right now we have to show a wall because, um, we haven't contemplated the grades yet on the adjacent property. We're working through that now. But in all likelihood, that wall will be able to go away and will be able to blend the grades um, from behind that structure into the adjacent lot. So that will allow me to put some plantings there. If I show them there now, the, the, the peer reviewer might have caught that and said, yeah, that sounds like a good place for a tree. You can't fit it. But I'll put them there now as a placeholder and just say, you know, when the wall's removed and not needed, trees can be planted in the road.
Okay, yeah, if you can put trees in, I think it'd be better.
Okay.
Yeah, Jim, so, um, I guess for tonight, what do you think against for down and moving forward?
Well, I think, uh, I don't know if anyone out there has any comments. I, I know I see Dennis Brain there. Does, I don't know if you had any comments on that?
I did, Jim. I, I just wanted to say that the production of the meetings seems to get better with every meeting and, and if the public wants to participate, um, the opportunity certainly there. The Zoom meetings have come a long way and cable access, the, uh, broadcast there is, is great. Um, just a few comments on the, on the project, if I could. Um, as you know, it was presented to the selectmen initially and the board looked at it, uh, was requested to support it uh, for a lip project for the forty B and that kind of started the process going. I, I think the board has recommended and, and the developer has agreed to a lot of changes that have made it a even better project than the one we saw a couple of months ago. So great job with that. Um, I don't know that, uh, additional ten feet is really going to make a difference, to be honest with you. Um, I kind of agree with, with Peter on that. I, I don't know that, um, a little tweak is, is going to make that much of a, of a difference. The, the selectmen actually looked at it and felt that it was somewhat consistent with the quarter and what the core is becoming in that it is industrial and commercial with the building going across the street and the other pads that are going to be redeveloped. Um, just to the, the east of the, uh, the, uh, project site that I guess Mr. Clark has under agreement now. So I think you've done a great job, um, with the project. And, um, another thing, I just want to, I, I'd like this project to be, and I, I think it's heading that way, to be the most desirable of its type in the region. And, and that's what it looks like to me. Much, I'd rather live here than and, than in the, the project down the street that was just built. And I, I think they've done a great job with the, with the amenities and, and the layout and that's what attracted us to it initially. So, um, I think the developer has done a great job and, and kudos to the board with the changes you've made. Just one other thing on the school impact. Uh, I remember when the, the Jefferson was first proposed back around two thousand and they had suggested that it would generate less than thirty children and it's a three hundred unit, I think two hundred and ninety-two units. Uh, and the, the board at that time, the zoning board at that time thought that was a joke and that there'd be many more students that would attend. And, and history has shown and, and we checked with the school, uh, department as well, that these projects truly do not generate a lot of school age children and those numbers that they had projected pretty much were right online with that project, uh, that was built. Um, now it's called the Charles. So I, I don't necessarily disagree with that. And, uh, I, I think if we can get some help with the quarter improvements, which I, I think this project's going to do, I, I think it brings a lot of good to the town, both from the forty B perspective, cleaning up the area. And, um, as I say, I think they, the improvements that the boards, um, recommended and, and obtained make a nice difference. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dennis.
Yes, thank, thank you for the information on school. That's very helpful.
But I, I know, I kind of, I guess I kind of went back and forth with the building vibe about moving there or not. But I do feel pretty confident. I, I like that, at least the change with pivot and net, and I think granted with the, you know, well done berm and that vegetative buffer, I think I feel comfortable with the current location, but. And I do agree that I, I do, um, you know, appreciate everything that the applicant's done and it definitely works, showed a lot of good faith and really worked well with the board and.
Worked very quickly, George.
Yeah, this has definitely been very quick, very efficient.
Very quickly.
Um, should I open it up then to the audience?
Yeah, if anybody else says anything, I, I don't.
See, you will, well, Peter.
Yeah, sorry.
At some point, we need to go through the entire list of waivers, make sure we check them off.
Yeah, sure.
I can, we can, I have to do that tonight or?
If you, if you like, I have the list right here. It's in a succinct, more succinct, uh, framework. Or, uh, Jesse wants, uh, to throw them real quick.
Proceeding to really, should we go through the waivers first before opening up to the public?
Is it, and there's, I, I don't see anyone in the public that, uh, that's not part of the applicant's team or, uh,
Okay, there's no.
I, my card is here. Uh, he's been shuffling me questions all along and.
We don't have.
That, so, um, yeah, so there really it's the, the, from my standpoint, I have listed waivers, uh, to discuss. And then Brian's points on traffic impacts. Uh, is there a contribution that you had in mind for traffic impacts of the corridor that you were willing to provide the board?
Yes, there is. Mr. Chairman, the, yeah. Content making a hundred thousand dollar donation to the corridor.
And so Jim, and I know I guess it's, because I'm just wondering what is, um, the town, I guess, think is appropriate? What have other kind of, I guess, across the street, and I know it's a different development, but what is the town ideally looking to, to get as a amount?
Yeah, I mean, so it, it's up to the board, um, you know, obviously that number that I, I threw out there early, I mean, there's, there's literally three million dollars worth of improvements for the town to make on the corridor. Uh, but, you know, uh, we do need to be mindful of, uh, the types of projects that are before us. I mean, Lincoln, uh, property, uh, though the warehouse project, that is a different, uh, set of financials. Um, you know, so they provided, uh, the two hundred fifty plus another one fifty, um, as well as the widening that you, that you saw there, that this applicant provided widening. Uh, and they're offering the hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's certainly up to the board to discuss that matter, but, uh, but, you know, there's, there's not a perfect science for it. Certainly, it's, it's simply, all of these projects are creating, you know, impacts to, to our corridor. And what we can do to improve upon it is, and it every bit helps, certainly.
Um, what are your thoughts, Brian?
Did you have the Lincoln with four hundred all in?
So it's two fifty plus another one fifty, uh, yes. Uh, obviously a lot of, a lot of that has to do with, one, the corridor, L, and also Lincoln's doing the intersection as well. Uh, you know, we have the town center intersection that, you know, this project as well as all the others are going to be impacted. Uh, that's, you know, a very sizable project. We're able to leverage some of, of these developments in order to get, uh, a state grant to provide close to two million dollars. But, you know, it's, as we saw, heard at town meeting, you know, it's, it's still, yet not enough to, uh, you know, there's, it's always, it's something up there.
Isn't, so the four hundred thousand that they're contributing, is that including the roadway improvements?
No, so the, the, the one fifty plus the two fifty. Um, I don't have the language in front of me. I'm sorry, but, uh, but no, it's, it, it's essentially Route one forty improvements. Um, as well as the intersection improvements, uh, two of those combined.
Is there any opportunity to bump that number up to one thousand or?
And I will say one thing that these projects are not the same project. So to create an industrial project to import a housing project, it's very, very different. Um, we can get into a lengthy economic debate, but I don't think we really need to. Um, what I can say is that I will take that aspect of the stakeholders. There's multiple partners in this project. Only two of them are in the room. Um, and then we will take it into consideration.
Yeah, because I mean, I don't really, because I guess like Jim saying, everybody helps, but I don't know exactly what market rate is or what is a.
Though I, if, if you do read through the book on the first of January, we'll, um, they did break down the whole financial analysis of the project and stuff. When is that actually?
Yeah, I mean, I guess again, I don't. Yeah, I mean, I guess, again, I don't wanna, you know, obviously, everything that they've been doing, working with us and John. I don't wanna crunch down on trying to meet some sort of number, but.
Yeah, no, I think that we've had far worse go-around with Apple, which has actually been a, a, a nice treat to work with someone going above and beyond, and it's a really nice project, really nice amenities, it's taking an area that's horrible, and it's making it desirable, but there's a lot of benefits coming with this project, and I appreciate all of that, but I think it's, the traffic is in that area at school time, at rush hour, pre-COVID is intense, and quite honestly, we're gonna make it a little bit worse with this project going, but any dollars that, that applicant is kind enough to contribute to improving that is, makes their progress, makes their, their development much more political, political, and it makes everyone's life a little bit easier, money is hard to come by nowadays in terms of the municipal funding, so anything that the applicant to help improve this area, which helps them, is greatly appreciated, so, yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, to, to some, you know, to check all the boxes, I can sit down, sit through the, the waiver request to you guys.
How much of conservation?
Uh, not, not, honestly, not many, a lot of them are stormwater-related, and so I will say that, you know, during the peer review, all the stormwater items, even the waivers were evaluated from our peer review engineer, and I spoke with our peer review engineer earlier today before the meeting, and he was satisfied with all of Bowler's responses and amendments to.
It certainly seems like responses came.
All of the questions, there were the different sized grades and water pipelines, only a foot and a half, and she would do feet off, take care of.
Yeah, so, yeah, so they, I don't know if Jesse, if you wanna touch on it, but.
Yeah.
As long, as long as it was.
I can say, I don't think I'm, I don't wanna put words in the peer reviewer's mouth, certainly, but all the comments that were issued to us related to stormwater were just housekeeping, there was no, they agreed with our assumptions and they agreed with our calculations, it was just they had asked for us, like, you had noted for one pipe to have an extra foot of copper put on it, we made that adjustment. And then I think they actually even suggested that one of the waivers were requested, didn't need to be requested, that it was, I don't know if I've ever had that happen, so that was good, they had one taken off the books. So I, I think our stormwater design is all set.
And Jesse, could you speak please, as well, that I know, I think from talking to Jim, that you're also, your stormwater management is meeting the bylaw criteria, right, so it is.
So, yeah, you have, you have a fairly restrictive, or I shouldn't say restrictive, aggressive bylaw that goes over and above what master market guidelines are, and it sounds like you've had some issues in town with other projects, and that's probably where that came from, so I, I understand that, it's looking forward to maybe potentially changes in the climate that would generate more stormwater than what we used to use for our calculation, so we took all that in, and we use your stormwater amounts, we use your rainfall amounts, and we use some of your conservative approaches, and then even went beyond that, and kept everything on-site, we reduced the rate, we reduced the volume coming off the site, we captured a hundred-year storm event completely, kept that on-site. We recharge 94,000 plus or minus cubic feet of stormwater, where it's only required by the guidelines to be 15,000, and we're also treating that same amount where it's only required to be 25,000, so, we're three and four-fold over what the requirements are.
Yeah, I just thought it's worth pointing out, because I know before it's been a point of intent, which is great, I mean, after you're meeting that, is there a, it's not under their obligations, they just have to be. Um, yeah, Jim, I guess.
Yeah, yep, and so, what I'll do, from what it sounds like, I'll just, I'll just remove the conservation, have the stormwater items, and it sounds like we've, we've simply through that. But, you know, the rear setback, there, there is a reduction of what's required, or what, what is being proposed. I think you guys have kinda nailed that one down, obviously, building heights, it's, they exceed our typical building height, which is pretty much an obvious one. The sign setbacks, we haven't really got into the signage, the sign setback is technically not within, or beyond the setback, but the, the reason for that is the right-of-way bulb that you see there. But however, I think it's, it's pretty common, and if the board choo- so chooses, we can certainly put a condition in there. So when they do refine their signage, it is come back to the board for just a very technical administrative review, not, not a public hearing or anything, but just a review just for aesthetics and setting and all that.
What exactly do you ask for?
So you see where.
I see the signs, yeah.
Yeah, so we see where that, the right-of-way is, where that black, it's all the black lines, so it doesn't meet the setback of the road, so you have to have 10 feet off the right-of-way for a sign. And that doesn't, because of the awkward location of the right-of-way there, that's not where the road is.
It's still about almost 40 feet off the road, but because of, as Jim pointed out, we have an odd bulb, if you will, to the right-of-way that pushes it right where we need the sign to go.
You gotta drop that right on the right-of-way.
No, we're still off the right-of-way, about 10 feet, a little less than 10 feet, that was the requirement, I think it was eight feet we were off.
See, despite all the parking, they don't quite meet the parking requirements, I think you're about five.
Five, sure, I'm sure.
All the parking lines is different.
I know, and we tried to fit five more, just.
I don't know how many towns you planted, was that a grant, a waiver for the park?
It was for me, but there was this big study that they did to revise parking, the number of spaces, and it's always too much.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I reviewed that, that study, it needed to be rational further, not, not just for this, but a lot of the uses.
Well, we could redesign, it's ramps.
Uh, let's see, street planting and parking area plantings, I don't, I don't recall, I don't have it in front of me, why you that set, that waiver?
I don't have it for me, but Jim, I have.
No, but, sorry. I imagine that the, in the parking area, they, they require islands with, with plantings, and obviously this one, that's not wide enough, perhaps. I just know it doesn't, didn't quite meet the, the standard. Administrative stuff like plant content doesn't have all the existing tenon caliber trees on, on the plant. Same with 12-inch, and that's, that's it. That's everything that's non-conservation, stormwater-related, everything else, you know, meets our local bylaw.
All right, so.
Yeah, so you said, Jim, there's no one from the public?
No, we can put it out there, though, anybody else from the public wish to be heard?
Okay, so it seems like we're almost there, I mean, I guess the only sticking point would be with the building five, so I don't know, with Brian and Peter, you seem kind of like you're.
I, I'm not really opposed, I think with the, with the landscape, they're gonna do. They have brought in a foot, I don't think pushing back something a difference. Appreciate where Brian's, where Brian's coming from, but I, but I think it's, it's been, I think the benefits, and he knows it's gonna be highly visual, the benefits of an outway is my, that. Oh, my God, what helps all our buildings.
Yeah, I tend to agree, I just don't, again, Brian, I don't know, because I don't know that applicant is willing to explore other options to even move it back to 10 feet, that is kind of a sticking point for you.
It, it's a sticking point, I, I understand the position, but I guess in the context of the locality, and if we're living with that, other. That one is maybe generous. Offered contribute to a traffic problem, we know that for it, so I think if, in light of everything, I can live with it, I suppose, I have a little more choice, but.
Well, you know, we all have choices, and, 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 Brian, I can totally agree with this. The time I grew up, when we put these huge buildings up on the water, you drive through, you're like, oh, my God, but they're literally right on the sidewalk. I think with the trees, and if, if they could pull two and three, the bigger trees back down there, I mean, that's, you pull out, that's huge. That's seriously.
Because westwardly certainly, that they have no planted proper at all, I think that's a big.
Yeah, if you go to pull the big trees, just shove them, and it's gonna be a big operation. Shove a lot of them.
If there's anything additional that you can do in terms of, in terms of, you did a really good job of planting the trees, if there's any other additional thing you can think of, creative to sort of mask the scale of that building, that's really, you know, I love trees, we all love trees, so, take a word if you can.
Okay.
If you tend to.
Yeah, we have a couple more gaps in there, I could try to fill those in.
Whatever you can do to minimize the scale.
Yeah, and, and I mean, and again, if that is something that you take back to the design team and say, is there any, to move it back to 10 feet, and it, it sounds like it is what it is, but at least, bring it one more time.
I think if there's any. If you look at it, the whole project is, they count parking spaces, if they were to move the whole thing back, they have to move the clubhouse and everything, that will put a pool area just part on top of this is building two.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
So I mean, the move that you have to shift the entire thing down, because you need that little corner on building five.
It's another observation.
So you, you're taking the whole thing, and now you're stuffing everything up against building two, you fight that too. And again, I'm not sure if 10 feet's.
Yeah.
50 feet, 50 feet, but that's true.
I agree with Brian Salisbury about having big trees right at the front of the street, that would be the best way to really hide the building. You know, lowering it by one foot definitely helped, taking it back by 10 feet, I, personally, I, I don't see that big of a difference, and I could see how the retaining wall and the clubhouse would be impacted, but I, I do like, you know, I appreciate what the applicant has done, done, excuse me, with residence, and the architecture seems very good, the drainage is very well done, the traffic impact seems a little, but not too significant, I do appreciate the contribution that the applicant has offered. If we can, if the town can get any bit more, we would be very appreciative, definitely, and one thing that I was thinking of for going to Blackstone Street, if, if there are any kids, high school children go and walk in there, is that whole area's sidewalk gonna be redone, is it gonna be nice and safe? Are there any issues in terms of safety walking to the high school, should they choose to go there?
And so, so Lincoln is required to complete that sidewalk all the way to Blackstone. So technically, it's on the other side of the street, but there will be signalized crossings that, well, there hopefully will be a signalized crossing at this intersection as well as there's one at Blackstone.
Then four.
All right, so I'm gonna grab a bad one, I'm surprised Brian didn't bring it on there. You guys are doing a great job, so I don't mean to make this negative, I answer your question, but with the certain of what the height of the building, visual, and everything like that. When these two parcels get knocked down, and the visual's gonna be over there, coming up one body.
That's, that's.
That's why Brian was saying with the trees, I think, I don't want to get that, or actually, no, I'm sorry.
Right now, I mean, those two buildings are really low. So hopefully, something nice moves in there.
So it's gonna be a balance, because you're right, it's in a little bit of a bowl almost, and what's gonna happen is to make that really work, is we're gonna have to probably split the difference, we're gonna have to bring the grade up a little bit, level it off, and then it'll go back down, so.
I'm looking at the plan, I think about visuals and stuff.
Yeah, we've actually started looking at that.
You gotta look at that.
Yeah, that's engaging, so start looking at that.
That's, that's actually the view that I think. Going in that direction.
Yeah, and, but I, I think with those two buildings out right now, when you do a worse view, want to say hello, and but the, the reality is, this is gonna look nice, and that's all being up right there, like, so. I think, I think over time, the long-term, the whole area, they could look much better.
Those buildings are in such a hole that it's almost like at the roof level, at least the lower building, is almost where the new grade could be.
Yeah.
So, think of whatever we put there, wiretaps, so, that.
Yeah, I'm gonna be challenged with, I gotta, you know, you want something that's forward, but I gotta make up the grade, we can only have some smoke getting up into the site that's manageable, so.
So I suppose we just remind what you probably was as well, as you step into that phase, I know, and I talk about it, it's complimentary, and also I've said something to the visual about it, so, it'll be appreciated. And I'm sorry, sorry.
So I guess, um, Jim, is that, I mean, do you think we're at the point to start looking, considering drafting kind of?
Yeah, I think you guys have hit on all my checklists, and I know Jesse has a few things to do to the plan, but aside from that, I mean, again, I, I would still stand by not closing yet so that we incorporate all those changes, but I can certainly start drafting a decision, I could have it to you probably early next week, where you had to start taking a look at it to to understand whether or not, you know, this is something that you're ready to make a, make a move on, or, you know, some changes have to be made, so I could definitely get that over to you fairly quickly.
We have to wait for the usual conservation side.
Right, so they've, they've met, you know, I think we'll have a good indication early September, so by the time your next meeting, I, I would imagine you'd have a, a good understanding.
Is there gonna be with conservation, this observation, once the, the next meeting's coming up?
Yeah, so they, they met once already, and they've done a sidewalk now, so I know they've offered some revisions to Bowler, so in, once those revisions are made, in terms of like the buffer restoration, which I actually already put on there, you know, I'll be talking with Clifford and Matthews about, you know, if there's any other concerns there, so. You know, ultimately, what, what we like to do is, when it's, when it's time to close, that there's no changes to the plan by any board, so that, once there's dark construction, I go out there, Andrew's out there, Tim goes out there, whoever, that we, we all working on that same, that same plan.
And then I guess the only last thing that I like to mention is just about, and it seems like that all the neighbors have been pretty satisfied with the working relationship, but have you heard anything else from any of the neighbors?
No, you know, I haven't received any additional comments, you know, it's certainly, I think they were all appreciative to be able to go to the sidewalk. We had, we had those two open houses that you guys joined me on, where then, you know, no one from the neighborhood showed up. So, you know, I haven't heard anything else since that time, and I, I know they're aware of, you know, the meeting, that they were on the first one.
Yeah, and this one, though, because also, this is not like a typical, it's an interim kind of zone, and it seems like that you've definitely been working, you know, really being respectful and trying to work with the neighbors, but I figured I just asked to see.
If you did any muscle motion, or you just not working on that?
Yeah, it's not a formal motion, but yeah, a motion to have the, start drafting a favorable decision would be appreciated.
I'll make a motion that, yes, since that.
Yeah, draft and grant your favorable decision.
Favorable decision.
A second. All right, hold in favor?
I.
I. Okay.
All right, and then, since we're not closing, it would need a continuation to September 3rd.
All in favor?
I.
I. Okay. Great. Thank you all.
Thanks again.
Jim, I gotta thank you, I'm doing this all.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Much easier.
It's so much better, so much better. You're, you're one of the few towns that have allowed the applicants to come in, which is fantastic.
Yeah, I kinda like the side, actually, it's pretty nice.
Yeah, we're, Peter, Peter Freeman, our.
Just, just so you know, I have a conflict on September 3rd, if I'm able to go over a draft decision prior to that, then it may well not be, you know, as you've noticed, I haven't had to say much, so, as long as Russ is okay, that I won't be able to be at the hearing on September 3rd.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Peter, that would be fun.
Okay.
One of those.
All in favor? All in favor?
Great. Thank you, guys.